...and twenty-fifth anniversary. And word is, Gwen, that tonight's performance is sold out. So break a leg, Jim. And did you know, in reading about Bell today, I found out Alexander Graham Bell's mother and wife were both hearing impaired.
Really?
Which had to be a big part of the incentive for what he did.
All I know is Jim's incentive is that he's not sitting here with us. He's off somewhere being author, author. So we wish him all good luck tonight.
We do.
That's the news hour for tonight. I'm Gwen Eiffel.
And I'm Judy Woodruff. We'll see you online and again here tomorrow evening with Mark Shields and David Brooks, among others. On behalf of all of us at the PBS NewsHour, thank you and good night.
Major funding for the PBS NewsHour has been provided by BNSF Railway.
The William and Flora Hewlett Foundation.
And with the ongoing support of these institutions and foundations. And this program was made possible by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting and by contributions to your PBS station from viewers like you. Thank you. KQED thanks our members and community partners for their support.
PBS proudly presents the Latino chapter of the American story.
My father thought that the United States would be like paradise.
You cannot close your eyes and your ears any longer because we are here.
I solemnly swear.
A landmark television event.
This is our homeland, where we all belong.
Latino Americans.
Two back-to-back episodes, Tuesday night at eight.
Next time on Frontline, on the ground in Cairo. From revolution to democratic elections to military rule.
The Muslim Brotherhood betrayed the revolution.
The Brotherhood essentially kind of deal with the military.
Was Egypt's fight for democracy hijacked?
Was the military responding to the will of the people or making this all happen?
Frontline Invest.
Is that it? Is that it?
Yes.
Who's that?
It's Ron.
Oh, is that it? Is that it?
Yes.
Who's that?
It's Ron.
Oh, 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 who's that?
It's Ron.
Everyone ready?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Capitola City Council meeting. May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Story?
Here.
Councilmember Botor?
Here.
Councilman Ritterman?
Here.
Mayor Harland?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will Carolyn Coleman please come up? We have a proclamation. Good evening and welcome to our council chambers. And thank you, everyone, who came tonight to participate in our meeting. This is... turn around this way. This is the City of Capitola's mayor's proclamation declaring September 19th, 2013, as the Santa Cruz Community Counseling Center Day here in Capitola. Whereas the Santa Cruz Community Counseling Center has cared for the people of Santa Cruz County through a spectrum of services that heal, connect, and nurture the mental and social well-being of individuals, children, and families for the last forty years, the Santa Cruz Community Counseling Center continues to touch the lives of one in four families in Santa Cruz County, serving over one hundred and fifty City of Capitola residents annually through life-transforming services delivered in a bilingual, culturally-sensitive manner. These services span an array of youth, substance abuse, mental health, early childhood education, family support, HIV/AIDS, and housing programs. The counseling center programs are targeted towards underserved and vulnerable populations, advocating with and on behalf of these groups and always keeping the needs and voices of program participants in the forefront of systems and policy changes. And I won't read the rest, but I'd like to give Carolyn a little chance to tell us about some stories of some people that they've helped and some things, some good work that they've done. And the need increases, and I'm so glad that you're doing all the wonderful work you are doing, you and all of your employees.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'd like you to tell us a few.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, thank you, Mayor Harland and council members. And we appreciate this recognition of forty years of the Santa Cruz Community Counseling Center and the city giving us this proclamation. And as we reach this significant anniversary, we salute the council's investment in human services and your dedication and partnership in our common goals of a safe and healthy community. And the city directly supports youth services counseling, and we have a counselor also located at New Brighton Middle School. And last year, we welcomed the Santa Cruz AIDS Project under our umbrella. And it's been a great partnership. And just to remind her that on September 22nd, we have the Surf City AIDS Ride. And I will actually be riding from the county courthouse to the beautiful village of Capitola and back. That's our twelve-mile ride. But for you cyclists, there's a thirty, sixty, and hundred-mile ride as well. So as you know, we're a critical part of the county's adult mental health system. We have substance abuse treatment services. We offer services for transition-age foster youth. We operate the federal Head Start and Early Head Start Centers throughout the county, as well as Papa's, Father Involvement, Transition Age Foster Youth, and special needs-supported housing. We have one hundred and seventy-five units of permanent affordable supported housing throughout the county. So over the years, the council has heard many stories about the impact that these services have had on the lives of your citizens and what these safety net services mean to them. And it's really the shared humanity of the stories that drive us forward as we all look towards the strengths in every individual and trying to build that sense of well-being for all and safety and a positive community spirit. So later this month, we're going to be announcing a new agency name. And while we've kind of long outgrown the Santa Cruz Community Counseling Center, which was, you know, one little house in Santa Cruz in the beginning where we provided substance abuse services, our original values of collaboration, innovation, compassion, trust, hope, and diversity still drive our work every day. So as we look forward to the next forty years, we're committed to continuing to partner with the city and staying focused on our mission of building on the strength of people working together to create healthy change in their own lives and in their community. Thank you so much for all your support over the years, and we really appreciate this recognition.
Thank you very much. May we have a report on the closed session, please?
Yes. The items that the council discussed in closed session this evening are listed on the front page of the council's posted agenda. With regard to existing litigation, there is a case pending against the city that's entitled Rail &amp; Leonard versus the City of Capitola. It's a personal injury case, and there are causes of action under the Americans with Disability Act. The council heard from their attorney, Vince Hurley, with regard to that matter. He provided the status report, and the council provided him with direction regarding the ongoing defense of that case. The council took no reportable action in closed session. With regard to labor negotiations, Lisa Murphy reported to the council as the city's labor negotiator of ongoing negotiations with the Capitola Police Captain's Bargaining Unit. She provided the council with a status report on those negotiations and took direction from the council with regard to ongoing negotiations. The council took no reportable action in closed session. With regard to real property negotiations, the council authorized the city manager to execute a quitclaim deed on an alley, a paper alley, on a 1907 subdivision neighborhood of Forty-S sixth Avenue and...
Was it Forty-S sixth and Wharf Road? Wharf Road and Grace?
Wharf Road and Grace.
Wharf Road and Grace.
The city voted to direct the city manager to execute the quitclaim deeds since the city has no interest in the right-of-way that were on the 1907 subdivision map. They were never dedicated to the city, accepted by the city, maintained by the city, or used by the city or members of the public. The city also gave the city manager the administrative authority to quitclaim future... quitclaim the same alleys in the subdivision if future requests come in for quitclaim deeds. And finally, the council had a liability claim from the California State Automobile Association listed for closed session discussion, but did not discuss that item in closed session. However, it is on the council's consent agenda this evening for rejection. That's the end of my oral report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Additional materials? We have a couple that are on our desk tonight that were emails that came to us. Any other additional materials? Additions and deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Norton, who's unable to attend the meeting today, has requested that the council continue Item 10D on your public hearing agenda to the next available meeting. The item is not time-sensitive, so if the council would like to, we can make that determination now and give someone who's maybe in the audience a heads-up that it won't be discussed tonight.
I would make that motion. Second.
This is Item D as in David, and one of the council members couldn't be here tonight and would like to discuss it, and we've had other questions about it. So we will not discuss it tonight. If you want to speak on that item when we get to it, we're not going to have a staff presentation, but if you... Tonight's the only night you can speak on it. You're welcome to. Otherwise, you can always send us an email or call us or come to the next meeting.
Do we need to have a vote called on that, the continuation?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is public comments. Are there persons in the audience that would like to address us on any issue not on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to it, and then you're welcome to speak then. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Harland, council, city manager. My name is Lori Hill, and I am the president of the 61st Annual Capitola Bagonie Festival. With me is Patty Bradley and Cynthia Rebecki. We are here simply to say thank you. To say thank you to the council members and all that you do for the festival. It was truly a magical weekend. It's great when Capitola can be on the front page in such a magical fashion. I'd like to acknowledge that not only do the city council members individually and as a group support the festival, but also the historical museum is one of our partners, the Chamber of Commerce is one of our partners, as is the Art and Cultural Commission and the help of Kelly Barreto. We appreciate everybody's assistance for this festival. This year was obviously emphasizing partnerships and emphasizing engagement. We want to get the community more engaged in the Capitola Bagonie Festival. And this year, we did something we'd never done before, which was a community float. I would like to take this moment to acknowledge the city manager with a participation ribbon that Patty has because he was down helping us build the community float. Rudy Escalante, I don't know that he's here or not, but Rudy was actually at the helm of our community float this year. Very exciting stuff. Cynthia, do you have anything you'd like to share about the community float?
Yeah, there was quite a number of...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, of course. I'd be happy to. There were quite a few volunteers, actually, from the community and from multiple states and internationally that actually had hands-on participation on the community float. And I'll just mention a couple of them. There was Nevada, Colorado, Hawaii, Florida, Michigan, New York, New Jersey. Those are the states and the countries are Israel, Poland, France, Argentina, Spain, and Syria. And those are the people that actually signed this. There's five pages here, and then we had a clipboard if people wanted to participate in the future years. There's about six pages of twenty lines each, who people are willing to come back. So it was really a great success. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Cynthia for stepping up and heading that float. Like I said, it was a very unique and experience that we've never done before. I also would like to acknowledge that we had tremendous volunteerism this weekend, and we hope to see that expand as the time progresses. Public Works, I'd like to thank Steve Needens, Frank DeFalco, Eddie Ray Garcia. He was one of the main people helping with our community float. And Steve Jesper. I have an extra key here for the electric car because you should always have an extra key for your electric car. So this is a gift from the Bagonie Festival. And I also would like to end with one more gift. And, you know, we only have one true purpose as a committee, the Capitola Bagonie Festival Committee. Our one true purpose is a festival to celebrate the traditions of Capitola, its horticultural history, and its family relationships. And I want the city to receive this as a thank you from the Bagonie Festival for your continued support of the festival. And you can hang it in the front office to acknowledge again what a magical weekend we had this Labor Day weekend. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody for all your hard work on it. That's quite a production, too. And everybody enjoyed it and had a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's wrong? Why?
Do I push the button here?
Good evening.
Okay.[1200.23][1200.23](laughing)
Watch for the hook. There we go. Hi, I'm Bob Cadwallader, and I'm with Second Harvest Food Bank, but I'm not here tonight to speak on behalf of Second Harvest Food Bank because one of the things that we've been assigned by the county is also the CalFresh program, food stamps, as it was called at one time. And I come before you today to speak about the CalFresh program. It's something which we need your help in realizing. We're looking and asking the leaders in our community, when they have an opportunity, to speak to various groups that are at risk to advocate the CalFresh program. And I'm speaking in this particular case that we've seen a dramatic decline in the conditions of Americans in the bottom two quintiles of our economic population, and increased poverty, groups that have become increasingly at risk, such as the elderly in our society, also the chronically unemployed. The CalFresh program, seventy-six percent of the CalFresh program feeds children. And so we're very concerned about this, and we have much experience. And in my own experience with the CalFresh program, I've seen many people come to ask for help with the CalFresh. And these are people, in many cases, that are working. But the nature of the work today, which is in the service of community, they're having a hard time making ends meet, the high cost of rentals and the needs, all kinds of economic dislocation, not just what has happened in the world and in this country, but also locally, too, the breakup of families. And all of a sudden, we have the fatherless who are at risk in our society. So what we're asking of you today, we're not asking for money, we're asking for your support. And if you have any questions about the CalFresh program as it exists, we're very happy to provide you with the information that pertains to it. We're also very aware that the demographic we're asking you to reach out to, in this case, the elderly within our community, many of these people have found themselves in an economically straitened condition where they must make a decision between buying their medications or buying food, and they're not telling anybody because they're proud. So we need people who they trust, who can encourage them. This will change their lives. We've seen this over and over again. Just a few dollars more in their lives makes all the difference in the world. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Nels Westman. It seems like I've been out of town all summer, and this is really the first chance I've had to come down to a council meeting and say thank you to the council and to the staff for our newly repaired and slurry-sealed street. We really appreciate it, and it is a much safer street on which to walk, drive, ride, or skate. And I know that while you all authorize the funding, I feel a particular need to thank Dennis for shepherding this project through the process. He made a commitment in 2012 to try and get this done in this fiscal year, and it has been done. I'm just bummed that he's not here to say, hear me say, thank you, but I hope you'll pass our thanks along to him when you do see him. So many thanks to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, everybody. Marilyn Garrett, and I hear talk about safety and well-being, and that's why I'm here. And it's a fact that the radiation age, whether it's Fukushima or all this wireless technology which you've embraced and have in this room from the non-ionizing radiation, is shortening our lives and destroying the planet. And I'm very dismayed that people in elected positions are proliferating this harm rather than replacing it with wired systems that don't pose this problem. Two recommendations here today. One is the Connection Magazine of this month. The focus is on children. I see two beautiful children here sitting next to me today who remind me of my classroom children that I taught for thirty years, last twenty of them in Watsonville. And it says here, "War is not healthy for children and other living things, and neither is wireless microwave technology, GMOs, vaccines." The whole center section has references and facts about the dangers of this technology to children. Part of what's cited in there is the County Health Officer's Report of January 2012 titled, "Health Risks Associated with Smart Meters." She talks about other wireless technology, microwave technology, and here's one of her statements. "There are no current relevant public safety standards for pulse radio frequency involving chronic exposure of the public, nor of sensitive populations, nor of people with medical and metal implants that can be affected both by localized heating and by electromagnetic interference for medical wireless implanted devices." The other article that came to my attention and is out just this month is one by Barry Trower, who is an expert in microwave radiation weaponry, worked for the British Secret Service. He titled it, "Wi-Fi: A Thalidomide in the Making. Who Cares?" And he wants this widely circulated. For those of you young people who don't know about thalidomide, and I'm sure you do, Stephanie Harland, you're a nurse, is, forget what year, it's the 1950s or 60s, pregnant women in their early stages of pregnancy were given a pharmaceutical drug that caused gross deformities, and it was under the guise of, I think, preventing miscarriage or nausea, so that you would see children born instead of an arm normal, there'd be a hand right here. This is titled, "Wi-Fi: A Thalidomide in the Making," because the wireless microwave radiation has a detrimental effect on the reproductive organs and the... It's over and over, I forget which one's plural, of little girls who put their laptops here for one reason. And there's a report that women exposed to radiation in the first seven weeks of pregnancy, this type of radiation, there was a forty-seven point seven percent miscarriage rate to the seventh week of pregnancy. Now, girls have, and girls aren't women, but girls have all their eggs at birth, and so these deformities are carried on generation to generation. He calls this a pandemic. And I'm going to leave you copies. The fact that this is allowed and promoted in schools is bordering on criminal.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to leave us anything that you like.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Good evening. And you can sign in there if you want your name spelled correctly in a minute.
I actually did. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Joel Campos. I'm with Second Harvest Food Bank, Santa Cruz County. And the reason that we are here today is just to raise awareness and ask for your support in raising awareness in this month, which is September. And September is officially Hunger Action Month, and there's many, many ways to get involved in this month. I actually have a calendar, which is thirty ways in thirty days, and there's so many ways that you could actually make a change or make an impact on somebody's, and a low-income family that is struggling to put food on their tables. Hunger is a real issue in Santa Cruz County, and the only, the first line of defense against hunger is the CalFresh program. Unfortunately, in Santa Cruz County, the CalFresh program is ranked on the fortieth place of the fifty-eight counties. And the only, the first line of defense against hunger is the CalFresh program. Unfortunately, in Santa Cruz County, the CalFresh program is ranked on the fortieth place of the fifty-eight counties and that is really, really low. So we're doing our best, the Second Harvest Food Bank, to enroll as many participants as we can. However, though, we do need the support and the help of everybody in the community. And that includes you guys. You know, whenever you guys are out there, I mean, we really do appreciate a good word in this program and just kind of saying that it is a good program for people to get on it and to apply for it. Bottom line is that, you know, there is, this last fiscal year, there was forty-four billion, forty-four million Americans in this program receiving federal funding or federal benefits. And it is a federal benefit. It isn't a state. It comes out from, from the federal government and it comes onto the, to the local economies and it stimulates the local economies. So it is a very powerful program. Hunger is an issue and I do have a few calendars for you guys to have. And in that, there is a, there is a challenge that is called the CalFresh Challenge. Can you survive on a CalFresh budget? And actually, a couple, a few of the outreach workers at the Second Harvest will be doing and taking this challenge in the coming week. And I'm going to just pass it on to you, Seth, just to kind of explain a little bit about it. But we did get some media and the newspapers and the Aptos and the Watsonville Baharonia and the Santa Cruz Sentinel. So I'm going to pass those around to, for you as well. Explain, CalFresh Challenge?
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Hi. So, good evening. So during September, we are doing a challenge nationwide called the SNAP Challenge. And it is happening nationwide, is not just something that we're doing here locally. And we are getting involved, us three members of our outreach workers. And we're basically going to be trying to promote awareness by kind of mimicking what a person goes through. They're getting roughly four dollars and fifty cents a day per meal. So on a weekly basis, that's thirty...
Thirty dollars?
Thirty-one, thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. And so I'll be taking the challenge as a household of three and my, my coworkers will be doing it individually. So we're going to be blogging and hopefully, maybe if any of you are interested in joining the challenge, it starts on the fifteenth and it's for seven days. And if you guys can do it for any reason, do it for one day. If not, please, you know, join us at the food bank so you can see the hunger firsthand. And also hopefully by next year, there'll be more awareness so hopefully you guys can also be a part of it. You know, it's a great cause. It's something that we promote highly because it's something that, you know, involves the community and sees people in a different way. You know, you can actually identify with them more because you do know that they're struggling even on the CalFresh benefits. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jody Wells. I work for Community Connection. I integrate and partner with Second Harvest and I am here too to talk about the hunger which is real in our communities. I work with a population that, I serve people who have mental illness, obesity and diabetes is very large in that population. I have a lot of issues that go with that, families who only are surviving off the participants' SSI they get. So they don't get CalFresh themselves, but their families are uneducated about they, family members themselves can get CalFresh. And so it's very important for, if you could help us really educate the community about CalFresh because there's a lot of families who are suffering when it comes to hunger. They, they settle for a lot less than what they could have. As you have heard in the speaks, the information before, they just don't know what's out here, what's available for them. They don't understand that they can't have another dollar. It's that one dollar that makes two dollars in our economical situation here in Santa Cruz County. As you heard, we are practically last on the list when it comes to CalFresh applications. So we would like for you to join our team and to educate our community, allow them to understand that there's help out here in the form of CalFresh. It's simple, the application process is simple. And I'm going to have Luisa kind of explain that for you.
Well, good evening. My name is Luisa Hatzbed. I work for Second Harvest Food Bank as a CalFresh outreach worker. And very briefly, sometimes I'm in the office with so much application images, the computer, a bunch of paperwork and myself, and working, working on that. But I get up in my chair, get out of the office and I go to those communities where those vulnerable people are. And when I see the, their frustration, when I heard their suffering to, trying to get such a vital resource, such food, I just can't imagine. Yes, Jessette, my coworker, was saying, "We are going to do this challenge." I'm already stressed out. How I'm going to make it for a week with four dollars fifty cents? And I'm so glad that I'm healthy. I don't need a special diet. And I'm so glad that it's going to be just myself. What if this is a reality? I have to live with four dollars fifty cents a day and I have children. I dragged to this situation. I can't even imagine. So there's a lot of people who don't want to apply for this program because there's a lot of myths. So if you guys can support us to promote this program and make more awareness that there's a great program that can help them to bring healthy food and feed their children, that will be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I have some writings in here. It's orange month, so I'm going to leave some for you guys in Word, please.
Thank you very much. I was wondering what those were. Thank you very much. Would someone else like to speak tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name's Nathan Cross. I'm a resident of Capitola, Livon Gilroy. And I'm a little dismayed that we have a difference of opinion about the quality of the road surfacing work that's been done. I do appreciate the fact city council has put it on a priority list. I, along with Nels, believe that it was something that needed to be done and was in dire need of attention. However, I brought with me some pieces of our street as it begins to crumble. And it's very disheartening for me to see taxpayers' dollars spent in a way with a contractor who had very little concern from my perspective of the quality of type of work we would expect in Capitola to be done. Today, the road continues to be twisted and turned by the wheels of cars and trucks. And I'm not talking about large dump trucks or trash trucks. I'm talking about regular automobiles or half-ton pickups like Toyotas. It's disheartening that when you drive down the street, it's much more rough now than it was prior to the resurfacing. I've been told, and Mr. Jesburg and I have had a conversation, I've had a conversation with a couple of the council members, that this was a typical resurfacing job and that I should spend my time going out and comparing it to other streets that have been resurfaced in Capitola using the same process. And I have done that. I've spent quite a bit of time looking at the streets. And I can honestly say that our street is not of the same quality as the other streets in Capitola. I was told, wait a month, Nathan, and you'll really like it. It'll get all smoothed out and everything will be fine. Unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, that's not the case. It's not smoothed out. It hasn't gotten any better. It's now in some places in that particular piece of asphalt, pieces of asphalt I brought is from an area in front of a home where it is actually now broken down into the original surface below the slurry. To me, if we require quality work, then we should demand quality work. If you notice and pick up some of those pieces, they're still malleable. They haven't set. And when the weather is warm, it still can be felt and moved very easily. I would like you to consider meeting with the contractor and discussing it further as to what he considers to be a quality job of doing the streets in Capitola. I've been told that he has done work here before and I am very concerned that he should do work in the future with Capitola. My tax dollars would go to pay for what I consider a very poor quality job. A little bit of background and I see the light to let you know, I've been involved with construction through schools and playgrounds and surfacing of parking lots for schools and building of schools. So I'm not completely ignorant when it comes to what high-quality construction and high-quality work is. I was told by one city council member, Nathan, this is not finished carpentry. I didn't appreciate the comment. I'm not thinking that it's supposed to be finished carpentry, but I do believe it's to be a high-quality project. I've emailed you. I know you've received emails from other people in the community. I again encourage you to go out and walk the streets, drive the street, ride your bike on the street. Even the skateboarders don't like the street, it's so rough. So please reconsider this contractor in the future and please consider some way of making it this, this abominable mess better before the weather gets really bad. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then we'll go on to the next item, which is city council comments. Are there any? Mike?
Sure. I attended the RTC meeting in Dennis's stead this last week and happy to report not only is the La Fonda Bridge open, but the lanes will be open by the end of October, the auxiliary lanes. So the project will be finished. They're doing some drainage work right now, so that's coming around. I would also like to remind everyone that this weekend is, in case anyone in the world doesn't know it, is Art and Wine Weekend. So remember not to park in the Village overnight on Friday night or your car will be taken away. And come on down and have a good time. Thank you. Oh, I have a question of staff. Is it true that our Consolidated Emergency Response Center is moving from its present location down to Live Oak in the Sheriff's Building?
That is true. The Consolidated EOC, it's actually the county's EOC...
Right.
...which the city will have a seat, is moving into the new sheriff's station relatively close to Capitola. Blanking on the name of the street, Shanticlee, I believe.
Correct.
And that, that move is, it's in construction now and I believe it'll be taking place in the next, relatively shortly.
What will happen to the fabulously expensive bunker we built about fifteen years ago up there?
The nine-one-one, the dispatch arranged, reached an agreement with the county to break their lease. The extra space is relatively, is going to be useful to dispatch at this point. They are subject to constraints, space constraints right now. In addition, there's a number of new activities which the general manager has been contemplating up there, which would be made available in that potentially, that EOC space.
Great. Thank you.
When are they thinking about moving? Did you say?
There have been a number of conversations about, first off, they have a space crunch overall. So just expanding and figuring out how they're going to allocate the bodies they have. In addition, there's been conversations about regional coordination activities being housed there. For those of you who aren't aware, there's a crime analyst who's stationed out in Watsonville looking at some of the AB 109, 109 issues. In the future, there may be some opportunities where a little more centrally located in the county, bodies could be, could be stationed out of dispatch.
And lastly, thank you very much to Tori Hannah for sending me the, the several weeks of check registers. I know we're due to receive the check registers at the next city council meeting, so it was a little bit preemptive, but only because our absent council member asked me to take a look. I'm sure you'll be hearing about, albeit the small check to design a community environment for three thousand dollars, the fact that, once again, we paid for our general plan a little bit more, the death by a thousand cuts. Thank you very much.
If you have any announcements?
I have a couple announcements. I attended the Monterey Association Bay Area Governments Meeting last night, the Ambag meeting. What they, we've been working on for the past six months is considering scenarios that affect the multimodal transportation improvements for Santa Cruz County, San Bernardino County and Monterey County. We originally began with five scenarios, reduced it down to two hybrids. And at last night's meeting, the final presentation, what was called a preferred scenario, was approved by all members of Ambag with the exception of one. The biggest discussion at the meeting was a little concerned about, most members from Santa Cruz County, about the lack of HOV lanes that will not be included in the next four-year plan. They stress that there's, the only reason that's not going to happen is there's not available, availability of funds. So it is still a prime concern for everybody, but the funds don't exist. Should those funds materialize through gas tax or any other source, it'll probably come to the, the top of the list. And what Ambag approved last night was pretty much in conjunction with what the RTC had approved at the previous meeting that Mike had attended. And the other report is, trying to do a follow-up on the, earlier this year, the SoCal Water District and Santa Cruz Water District came to us and made a presentation on D-SAL. And at that meeting, Councilman Norton made a comment about a concern about an exorbitant fee that was being charged for water hookups for an ADU unit. And they, we followed up with this and they actually had a hearing in June and four members of this council attended that meeting and expressed concerns about the high fees. And we actually made a request to them to see if there's something they could do to reduce those fees because the ADU units were a way that we were able to provide affordable housing in, in Capitola with the use of granny units. So it took quite a while to get to that meeting, but the meeting actually occurred on September third. And at that meeting, the original cost for someone to have a, someone who had a house and wanted to have an accessory dwelling unit, the cost for a fifteen gallon per minute, five-eighths meter, would be an eight thousand four hundred dollar water capacity charge plus a six thousand dollar connection fee for a total of fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. And that, in addition to that, there would be the actual installation to dig into the street and excavate, make the water connection for a total cost of approximately thirty thousand dollars. This is the cost that we were uncomfortable with and we asked them to look into that. Their staff looked into that and they came up with a device that they called a bullhead metering option. Do you have that, that picture for me? Anyway, the option, when the picture comes up, the option for this device, which they researched, had a reduced water capacity fee of thirty-six hun, thirty-four hundred and sixty dollars, a connection fee of two thousand, for a total of five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, which would reduce the cost to an applicant by approximately twenty-four thousand dollars. So I felt at this time that that was what we had asked for. This device also would not require the homeowner to dig into the street and excavate. They would be able to branch off their existing meter. And the concern that the water district expressed to us, which is a concern for all of us, is the regulating of water to houses. They wanted, their main concern was, is that their statistics had shown that there was a water reduction of at least fifteen percent by having a meter. And we supported their, their concern for the, for the water monitoring. And during the process, I got up and I commended them for, for coming up with this option. This is what we asked for. It seemed reasonable. Staff made this recommendation. Unfortunately, when it came to the board members to vote, they, they voted unanimously to turn it down. And I was a little disappointed by that decision. And the other decision that disappointed me was, as they were discussing it, the comment was made, "What is in this for us?" And I, that's the statement that bothered me because I feel it's our job as elected officials to work with all other boards and districts and committees to try to further how we provide services to the citizens. So I just want to make that presentation. I know we all got involved in that and this is where it stands right now. And I'm hoping that we can have further discussion with them and find out, you know, why, why we weren't able to proceed with that project. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Do you have any announcements?
I have nothing to report.
My only announcement is go out and enjoy the county fair this week. It's a lot of fun. It's through Sunday and there's always some great things to see there, day and night it's open. Any staff comments? Then we have board and commission and committee appointments. We have an art and cultural commission.
I think we had a staff member who was trying to get up to the podium, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I am pleased to announce that we did release a draft of the general plan update on Monday to the general plan advisory committee. We've distributed copies to your council as well as posted a link to the document on the plancapitola.com website. So I'd invite any interested members of the public to review the document, contact, contact me if they have any comments, feedback or questions, and we'd certainly be happy to help them through that. The G-PAC will be reconvening at the end of October to provide us with their comments and feedback, after which we'll take the major policy issues and some of their comments before I join... before I join City Council, Planning Commission meeting, scheduled for later in November.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, number eight. Sue, is this yours?
Lisa Murphy.
Oh, Lisa.
Lots of famous people in here. Yeah, there are lots.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is David here?
David is in French Polynesia.
Oh, that's right.
Poor baby. Poor, poor baby.
All right. Well, I'm pleased to announce that we, the Art and Cultural Commission.
He's an artist.
Oh, he is? Okay. The Art and Cultural Commission has before you a recommendation to appoint David Kramer as the at-large member to Art and Cultural Commission, as well as appointing Kim Hogan as the artist representative. We had a vacancy, Karen Nevis stepped down, and she was the artist representative. We had a difficult time recruiting, we did a lot of outreach, we did not receive applicants for that specialized spot. And then when it surfaced that we had a member of our at-large commission that would qualify, we thought, well, that's a great solution. And Kim Hogan was that person, and we thought, let's, recommended the council that we move her to the unexpired term of Karen Nevis, and then we had David Kramer, the Art and Cultural Commission recommendation, to appoint to the at-large position that then Kim's spot opened up. So that's the recommendation before you. The commission interviewed him, was very pleased with them. We feel like he's going to be a terrific addition. Again, he's in French Polynesia, researching art projects to bring back to Capitola. So without any, if there are no questions, that's our recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
It should be noted that Dave is in French Polynesia researching art and paying for the trip himself.
Oh, that's correct.
It's not a city junket, it's not, okay, good.
Yeah.
I think it started to move in that direction, I thought we should. And also, I think Kim Hogan is the artist for this year's Art and Wine Festival.
Yes, if you did not know that, Ms. Kim Hogan. And that's very pleasing to the Art Commission to have our member do the artwork. That's it.
Would someone like to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll move that we accept the two appointments.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is nine, it's the Consent Calendar, which is a group of relatively minor issues that we vote on in one motion, unless someone wants to take something separately. So would anyone from the audience like to pull an item for separate discussion and vote?
I'll move the Consent Calendar. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is 10A, consider appointing a city treasurer to fill a vacancy for the remaining term of the former treasurer ending December 2016.
Madam Chair, before I get started, I am thinking a little bit about how best to present this item, since really there are two questions in front of you, obviously a related topic. I would like to propose that first we discuss how we're going to fill the existing vacancy, and then once council has made a determination on that action, we can talk a little bit more about the pros and cons of elected versus appointed treasurers. So I would propose that we break up this presentation into sort of two chunks, if you will. So on July 10th of this summer, the city treasurer, the elected city treasurer resigned. Council held a hearing on July 25th, and at that hearing, City Council directed staff to advertise for applicants to consider appointing to the vacancy, and in addition, to prepare a resolution for a possible ballot measure, so that tonight, on September 12th, council could make a final determination about how the vacancy was going to be filled. You will recall that under state law, vacancies in an elected treasurer position, the council needs to make a determination within 60 days of the vacancy, whether to fill the vacancy with an appointment or to call an election. Staff advertised for the vacancy, and one application was submitted from Ms. Christine McBroom. Ms. McBroom is a licensed financial advisor and has served on the city's Finance Advisory Committee for over three years, and the last two years as the chairperson of the FAC. Staff's recommendation at this time, and this is the decision that council needs to make tonight, is to appoint Ms. McBroom to fill that vacancy. The FAC did review the options and made a recommendation that an appointment was an appropriate way to fill this vacancy. Other alternatives the council could consider would be to call an election at this time for November 4th, 2014. That would be no additional cost to the city, but there would be a vacancy in the treasurer position until that time. Alternatively, a sooner date, sooner could be called of June 3rd, 2014. However, that would cost the city about $41,000 by staff's estimate. I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions? Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue of whether to appoint someone to this vacancy or hold an election right now? Then I'll close the public hearing, and...
Is this half the public hearing? Is this bifurcated?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would like to make a motion that we appoint Christine McBroom to the office of treasurer for the remainder of former treasurer Kim DeWitt's term. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the second part. The second part is something that we can begin a discussion about tonight, but we have, we have some time to think about it and to gather some information about it. So I would suggest that we not take a vote on this tonight, that we continue to gather some information and think about it.
And there are some options, which I'll outline, that the council may want to consider issuing some direction this evening. First, I want to congratulate Ms. McBroom on the appointment. Welcome to the city of Capitola. The second thing, and this is potentially an item where there will be more discussion, is council asked staff to look into cities that have appointed treasurers versus elected treasurers. State law requires, general law, cities to have a treasurer. By fiat, it is an elected position unless the voters have approved a change to an appointed position. 65% of the cities that were surveyed, which was the majority of the cities, and we got hold of about 400 cities in the state of California, have appointed treasurers. Overall, the trend is to transition from elected treasurers to appointed treasurers. As I mentioned, it does require a vote to make that change. In general, the arguments that people make in favor of having an elected treasurer is that there's increased accountability in the elected position that's independent from the city. Another argument is that it's another watchdog, if you will, for the city. The argument in favor of an appointed treasurer is that the position has transitioned over time into a very highly technical position. In an election, it's not subject to any kind of qualifications or background assessment. The city of Capitola has not had a competitive race for treasurer in a number of years. In addition, the position is not technically, and the government code is not an oversight position, it's really a component of the city administration, the keeper of the city's money, and it's not an audit position, if you will, in state law, auditor position in state law. If you were to consider placing an item on a ballot to consider the switch to an appointed position, on the November 14 ballot, which would be the next logical time that that could be done, would be July 13th of the summer, basically, would be the opportunity, would be the deadline to pass a resolution. And the FAC has offered to research this item, to look at the pros and cons of an appointed versus elected treasurer, and to report out their findings to the council if they're directed to do so by the city council. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions right now?
Yes, when you, when you, you know, drill down on this a little bit, could you let us know, the cities that appoint, are there, are they city staff members that fill those positions, or is it actually a citizen that is appointed by the council? Because that's, for me, clearly is a very different approach.
It is a different approach, and in general, the cities that, you know, our city clerk actually conducted the research, the cities that I have seen that make the appointment generally appoint their finance director, because the role of treasurer is outlined in the state, state law, is effectively the keeper of the city's money. And, you know, our city finance director is a, subject to, subject to backgrounding, extensive interview process, and is the person effectively, de facto, who we entrust with the money. In general, other cities that have gone to an appointed treasurer, that do appoint staff, will often have sort of external auditor-type positions, which is certainly an opportunity. I think frankly, if the position was technically a watchdog position, I don't know that we'd be having this conversation, because I do think that there's value in that independent voice as a kind of overseeing and observing and, you know, providing insight into what the city is doing. It's really the administrative function, if you will, that the treasurer position is called out in state law, that is probably, probably inspiring more of the cities to go this direction.
I do have, I do lean towards the appointing idea, but I'm very uncomfortable with the appointment of someone who's already a city staff member. I think that that external set of eyes is very important, it's important to the voters, and the only thing that makes me lean towards the appointment is the difficulty we've had finding people that, you know, we feel are qualified to step up and actually run for election. We wind up finding people who are able to win elections but not necessarily are capable of fulfilling the duties of the treasurer.
And we'll reiterate that, you know, you don't need to make a decision tonight, you can simply, you know, ask the FAC to look into it. And certainly, when we look back at the pros and cons, obviously, several of the issues by appointing an outside entity rather than a city staff person could still be accomplished then, and you would still have a back, backgrounding process. So that may be a happy medium to land upon, but again, you don't have to make a final decision tonight.
I should add, except for Glenn Hanna. Okay. The problem didn't go back that far.
Other questions? Then this is a public hearing, I'll open it up. Would anyone like to speak? Good evening.
What do Bell, Delaue, and Stockton have in common? They have two things in common. Staff members were the city treasurers, and they're all bankrupt. This is not to say that having a staff treasurer leads to bankruptcy, but clearly it points out that having a staff member as a treasurer does not avoid financial misdeeds. More conversely, that elected treasurers cannot be in bankrupt cities. It hasn't happened yet. But let's speak to the issue of qualifications. In 1984, the city had a ballot proposition to make the treasurer appointed. It lost overwhelmingly. As a result, they then had a meeting, just like you're about to have, and I'd like to quote from that meeting, May 24th, Stephanie, that should be, in 1984, that was, should be a familiar date, you had just been elected to the council for the first time. And the discussion came up about what are the qualifications for these appointed officials. And I'd like to quote from the meeting, that meeting of May 16th, 1984, and this is a staff report prepared by the city manager, and he goes on to say, quote, "It does not seem appropriate for the position of treasurer to have a higher or different qualifications from those required in the state code." He further says, "It does not appear appropriate for the staff to suggest other duties that would have to carry additional qualifications other than a person to be an elector of the city." I would also point out to the community, and to each of you, as I'm sure you're aware, that the qualifications to be the treasurer are exactly the same as the qualifications to be a city council member. And if you can suggest that elected treasurers are good at winning elections and can serve the public, I think you can also suggest that elected council members are really good at getting elected and may not be able to serve the council. So this business of needing special qualifications, I think, has moved. On the issue of, we have experience with elected, appointed staff members. In the eight years between 1984 and 1992, the following things occurred. A million-dollar reserve fund disappeared into the general fund. A parcel of property bought on a HUD grant was sold and proceeds went into the general fund. And thirdly, we had a $7 million loan on the books with the RDA that required us to sell off the property behind the current library. So we do know what may happen. Finally, I just think that we need the independent oversight. It's an illusion to think that appointing somebody is going to deteriorate our ability. The same staff that's here now is going to be there, and the fact that you have an elected official, that's a plus. So I urge you to consider those motions, and I don't think it's necessary to have a, an election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Karen Hanna. It's the Hanna 1-2 here. Congratulations to Christine. Excellent choice. Which also points out the fact that if, at a certain election, we don't have anybody who chooses to run for treasurer, the council always has the option at that point to make the appointment, either of a staff person or of a person at large from the community. So, you know, that's always, that's always out there. And again, the whole competency issue on an election, always an issue. You never know how anybody's going to do the job until they're elected. And I think that kind of points out a lot of the situation here. You know, it's, any opportunity to draw a resident into the leadership position in the city is a good thing. There really aren't that many opportunities, and there are some people who might not feel comfortable going, you know, directly standing for election as a city council member before holding any other, more public position in Capitola. So the treasurer is just one of those, and I just, I think we all know how hard it is to get people to step up. I'm not even saying good people to step up, I'm just saying, getting people to step up and do that, do any of these jobs. So eliminating one possibility doesn't seem like a particularly good idea. And if, if Kim DeWitt had not resigned, you know, this is pretty much a council-driven issue, and if she had not resigned, this probably would not have come up. So I'm asking you not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? They'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, who would like to start first? Any discussion or comments?
I'll speak. I have some thoughts about this city treasurer position, and, one, I don't really believe that, you know, we need to react and change how we select the city treasurer because of, you know, one bad experience with the current treasurer resigning the position. Our history has been that we've had excellent treasurers, all elected, beginning with Glenn Hanna. We had Bob Begon, who then moved on to the city council, Jacques Bertrand, who then ran for city council. So I, one, I think the city has spoken, and they say, "We want an independent person elected by the residents to be separate and apart from the city council." I think that we should honor that. I don't think there's any great need here to move to a different system or to a council-appointed system. I think that that eliminates the independence that the residents really wanted by asking them to be elected, and I think I agree with Karen. It's another opportunity to have the residents, such as citizens, involved in the local government. And, you know, when there are controversial financial issues that are taking place, I think that having that independent oversight gives the citizens another opportunity, and maybe a greater comfort level, that things are being done through the appropriate checks and balances. And so I don't see any need for us to be, you know, moving forward to changing this system. And as also, as Karen mentioned, we also have the fallback, that if a city treasurer, if someone chooses or doesn't run in a particular year, it always falls to the council to make that appointment. I would go so far as to say that, you know, maybe, I think the council, even though in those circumstances, should defer to the Finance Advisory Committee, and maybe just set up a policy that the chair of the Finance Advisory Committee should become the city treasurer. If we don't have an elected treasurer, or the elected treasurer should need to be replaced. So those are my thoughts on it. I think that we shouldn't let this one bad experience dictate a policy change. Thank you.
Mike?
You know, while we certainly shouldn't be reactionary, I would never be in favor of a staff person being the treasurer appointed. I think that if it doesn't cost anything in November of 14 to add this to the ballot, am I correct? We're paying for the election anyway, that's assuming that there are... anyway. That's assuming that there are contenders in the city council race. Then it wouldn't hurt to find out how the city feels about it if it were a non-staff-appointed position. I like the idea of the chair of the Finance Advisory Committee, that they might recommend an appointed treasurer, and then that the council could take that recommendation and act on it. And yet, after listening to Karen and Glenn, I start to think that maybe the failure isn't in who we feel may or may not be qualified being a singular candidate for treasurer. Perhaps we've been remiss not engaging people in the community to run for treasurer, and we have failed to reach out to people we know and respect, who are knowledgeable. That's another, you know, wake-up call that I think we should pay attention to.
I agree with both comments that were made. I'm going to segue a little bit into this. I attended a Begonia Festival weekend meeting a couple nights ago, and similar to our dilemma right now about people not applying for jobs, the Begonia Festival is concerned about the longevity of that. And they finally realized that it's up to them to go out and re-energize and solicit the town of Capitola, because it truly is our only event that's unique to us. And as they realize at the end of the meeting, they need to go out and they need to find people to build floats and find people to donate their homes and re-engage the community. Like Mike mentioned, that's what we need to do with these positions. You know, the last election that I participated in, you know, it wasn't a strong showing. There was three people for two jobs. So we need to go out and engage the community. And I believe that the city's taken a step with that. I just got a flyer here for a leadership class that's going to be offered, which is good. The intent is to encourage people in Capitola who don't know about getting involved to come and learn the key components of the city and get involved and see if this is something they might like to do. And although we, I think we lucked out with Christine McBroom to fill this vacancy, there is no urgency to replace or change this position. I think we can continue with this, and hopefully she's going to stand there until 2016, and then there'll be an election. And if we've done our job to go out and solicit people to get involved in the city, then we're going to get people to run for that job. It'd be nice, like was mentioned, that the job has been run, the treasurer job has been run opposed the last two elections. But I still feel the importance of the position is, you know, whether there is transparency, or whether it's going to improve, or whether it's going to hold back, I think the big thing that people are concerned about is the perception of transparency. And that's what it's about. It's the perception in their mind that someone is there looking after what they're doing. So I encourage us to probably just let this ride out, and in 2016, there'll be more applicants.
Well, I would favor putting it on the ballot and talking to the citizens about it, because it's been a, it can be a huge political deal, and it was. And I don't really want to go through that fight again. It was very unpleasant, and there were a lot of people that really were very, very unhappy about the experience, month after month after month after month. People coming here and telling us that we're crooks, and we need to resign and go to jail and so forth and so forth. It was very dark. So I think the Finance Advisory Committee can serve the watchdog role, get some more people involved there, get them to have greater oversight on some of these issues. And that can be the spotlight for the Citizens Committee that looks at the budget, that looks at expenses, that looks at policy and so forth, and gives us recommendations. But I would not want to elect somebody because it could be someone that doesn't have the time to put into it, has a political agenda, doesn't have the knowledge to know what's going on, and that's, you're taking too much of a chance there that I'm not willing to take and go through again. So I would favor just expanding the authority of the Finance Advisory Committee and maybe the membership.
A question. Question. On the comment you mentioned, the cost of the election, I'm just trying to reflect back. The special election is approximately $41,000. And you said that if we do it at the time of the same election, it's no cost?
It's very low cost. Correct me if I'm wrong. You know, it's not no cost, but adding another item to the agenda is a couple thousand bucks.
Would it be similar to like when we added Measure O on at that point?
Yes.
But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that was about $10,000, $11,000.
It was less than $14,000.
Okay, so I'm not comfortable saying it's no cost.
I want to just clarify. I believe the entire election was $14,000.
The entire election was less than $14,000.
Right.
Including city council?
Yes. And I checked with the county clerk, and she said that it really is no difference between, you know, council members running and adding a measure to the ballot. It's all--
So is it per position? So if we spent $14,000, are you saying that it's--
I think my original answer stands. The marginal cost of adding a measure to one of our regular elections is relatively insignificant, a few thousand, if even that. It's just that I think it affects if the printing cost changes.
Right. I guess I'm not comfortable with the word insignificant. You know, as requests come to us, I mean, if the cost was $14,000 for the election, somehow that's broken up into two different things. We had a position. I don't know if it's per person on the ballot.
It's mainly the printing costs for the ballot.
Okay.
I'd be happy to research it further if you'd like a breakdown of the actual increase in cost. I know that there's two elections that I've been a part of since I've been here at the city manager at the city. The costs were relatively similar between the two. I think one was 16 and one was 14. And so I think it just depends on sort of the overall printing cost. And if the ballot measure has a lot of arguments, pros and cons, I think you can add something to the cost. In other cases, it may not change it at all. So I'm sorry, it's not a better answer. I'd be happy to research it more, but I think a couple thousand bucks is a reasonable estimate.
Okay.
Okay, so no action required on this at this time. We'll just continue to gather information and look at it, and we'll bring it back with someone's interest in bringing--
And the fact has offered to look into this a little bit, if the council would so like, but they didn't want to see the direction, and they wanted to make sure they weren't spinning the wheels. So is this a valuable report where the facts input would be valued by the council, or is this something that the council thinks is more of a council, and we can have the conversation and provide information to staff to help assist the conversation?
Well, from my standpoint, I'd very much like to see this removed from the council and have the Finance Advisory Committee look at the issue and look at the question. I'm very concerned about the council politicizing the question of the city treasurer position, and it's starting here, and who knows what unintended consequences may flow from that, even from the election itself. So I think I am cautious about that. If we're all going to move forward with further study, I would suggest that we delegate this to the Finance Advisory Committee. And I guess unless there's a citizen group willing to form a committee to pursue this, I'm not quite sure how it gets politicized, or who the advocates, who's going to be presenting forth the arguments on one side or the other. I certainly don't think it should be the city council doing that. And so I guess I'm wondering who's going to be carrying the banner on behalf of one argument or the other. So just some things I think that need to be considered, and maybe the Finance Advisory Committee could do that and come back, and we can have a further, you know, discussion about it.
And it is on our work program for the Finance Advisory Committee, so we'll be bringing something back. Our new treasurer will probably be bringing it back to you in the next couple of months. Get to work.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Number B, a report regarding the 2013 slurry seal program.
Evening, councilman, mayor and council. The item before you tonight is to accept the 2013 slurry seal project as complete. Authorize me to file a notice of completion for the project and release a retention of approximately $8,600, 31 days from the filing of the notice of completion. As we saw tonight, during oral communication, there are conflicting opinions on the quality of the slurry. We've certainly gotten emails along both lines. Some people have absolutely loved it, and certainly there's those that have been vocal about the final result of that slurry seal. It's my opinion that the slurry seal is consistent with the specifications of the project. The material was correct. We did have the aggregate checked, just to make sure that there weren't any problems with the aggregate or anything, and everything did check out. I think what we're seeing on the slurry is they are subject to spinning when power steering turns are made on the slurry. The roads through on Gilroy and Riverview are very narrow, so we do have a lot of that going on in that neighborhood. That should stabilize. It may, it's not going to happen in a month. I think the road was significantly smoother after a month than it was when it was first applied, and it will continue to smooth. I did have the roads looked at by two independent people. One is an engineer for Harrison Associates, who's been in the street business for 30 years. And he reported, you know, he didn't take a detailed look. He obviously didn't see it getting applied, but he thought it was a good slurry seal. And also, I was not present, but I know a representative from Granite Rock has looked at it with one of my staff, and he reported the same thing. I think the issue that we're having is, it's a slurry seal. It's not smooth. I wouldn't expect it to be smooth as pavement. We used to do a chip seal, which was even a rougher material, but we've kind of gotten away from that on small residential streets, because it's very rough. But the slurry is going to be rough. It's not for skateboarding on. It's for driving on. And so those are my views. I think my recommendations stand that we should accept this project as complete and authorize me filing the notice of completion.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Michael?
Steve, specifically to Gilroy, you know, until I saw the sample, did we have like an adhesion problem, mixed formula? I'm wondering whether there's raveling starting to take place, and we're just seeing the beginning of it? And are we, should we hold a little bit back? Because that doesn't look consistent to what I observed up at the Explorers, the slurry sealing they did up there. Maybe was Gilroy too far gone, and it was like on the cusp of not being eligible for slurry?
Both. Probably most of the streets we slurry sealed in this time. If we had had a healthier budget, more robust budget, we would have done an overlay on. We've tried to extend the life of the road using a slurry seal. I think their pavement condition indexes prior to the slurry seal would have warranted an overlay. You know, our experiences in overlays are, you know, 10 times more expensive, and we didn't have that funding available. We wanted to get something done on that street. What you're seeing now, and I have to go look at it, frankly, it's been probably a week and a half since I've walked Gilroy. It could be that the underlying pavement was alligatored, and if that alligatoring's coming back up, that's something we could expect. But I still think the slurry, I'd be happy to go look at it again if you'd like.
It seems, I mean, I'm in favor of voting in favor of the staff recommendation here, but I think that perhaps a little bit should be held back to take a look. It looks like the emulsion didn't allow it to adhere properly. And I agree with all of your comments with regard to, and my apologies for making the bad haircut reference on the slurry seal. It was one that was passed to me by a paving guy. But that sample, you know, raises some questions. I'm not sure where it came from, if it came from a flat road surface, or it came from the edge of a manhole or a driveway edge. I don't know. But it begs a question that maybe we had a bad formula or something happening on maybe a particular street, because there's a great disparity between what I saw in that bag and what I observed on the other streets, even Riverview for that matter. So just a thought.
That particular piece did not come from the edge of the road. It came from about three feet into the road.
This is a public hearing, so if you'd like to get up and speak, please come to the microphone.
And if it did come from, you know, in the road surface, was it near a break, like an access box, manhole plate, or was it just in the field?
Nathan Cross again. It was in front of a driveway about three feet into the street. And there are several other places where it's beginning to break up. You'll notice that that is still very malleable, and it hasn't begun to set, really. As soon as it warms up, again, like I said earlier, it does easily get ripped and torn.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? This is a public hearing. Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Who would like to start?
Go ahead. Open up here. Just want to clarify a couple of things. I had actually checked with the Public Works Director today, and I want to make a comment. The slurry seal program is a program, Steve, you need to correct me if I say something that's not accurate here, because it's an understanding. Slurry seal program is something we do to preserve roads that are in good condition, better than average condition.
Yes.
And I asked you today for a copy of this. It's a pavement index, which rates all of our streets in the city. And the number, the higher the number, obviously, is the better the condition of that street.
That's true.
And our best success with slurry seal is using this method on streets that have a certain minimum number. And I look here that we pretty much slurried in two areas. I hadn't heard references that, the Explorers.
Sorry.
I was going to say Cliffwood Heights, but I'll--
It's Cliffwood Heights.
The Explorers, okay. Was, and I look at the numbers, and they're all high 40s and above. And then when I look at the two streets, Riverview and Gilroy, low to mid 20s. And so I'm suspect that, you know, it possibly wasn't our best choice to slurry those areas. But I'm, you know, going back to our councilman that made the request, I believe pacify one of our earlier speakers on Riverview, that, you know, we need to get some work done. And I'm recalling that, you know, we were coming into the early stages of Measure O money, and we were feeling like we wanted to get out there and make a big bang on the streets. And we've committed a lot of the Measure O money, actually, to going into the streets. But I think in retrospect, Gilroy would have been a street that was probably better suited for an overlayment than slurry seal, which was what was done on Oak, which gives the apparent, which why Oak is the street that you can, that looks like it's holding up. And I did walk Gilroy this morning, and I've walked it a couple times, you know, just waiting for that to transition. And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot that goes into it. And I'm concerned about what it looks like before you slurry is going to be what it's going to look like after. It's not going to make the improvement better. And I'm very suspect that, like I said, it was probably a better street to be chosen for overlayment, but not necessarily was it its turn in the rotation that we have to pick back, because we've committed to lots of other, you know, other streets. There was a lot of patching, I believe, that was done on Riverview, and maybe because that, just because of the topography of Riverview and the way people park on that street, it's not always necessary to back in and turn their wheels as much as they do to parallel park. And when I could see when I walked it was, is that it's contributing to the erosion there on Gilroy. So where I'm going with this is I'm going to support that we pay the contractor. I believe the work that was done was consistent with what we expect them to do. I think it was, you know, us maybe trying to, you know, appease the neighborhood with some work up there, when actually, like I said, the numbers indicate here that, you know, it maybe would have been, you know, to be put into the rotation for overlayment. And I think that that's maybe the direction we need to go. Maybe we even somehow prioritize that. I don't know. I know we've already committed for the next two years to larger projects, but I'm going to support that we pay the contractor for the work that was done.
You want to go next?
Steve, what would you suggest about the potential for lack of adhesion?
So the city attorney reminded me that they do have a performance bond that we hold for a year. So we could, if there is a performance issue, we do have a vehicle to go back and get repair work done by the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Sam, any comments?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I guess I'm really disturbed by, I think, perceptions and the conflicting perceptions about the nature and the quality of the work. And maybe both parties are right from their perspectives. It's from, but it's hard for me to evaluate exactly whether or not the project met the specifications. And the specifications aren't listed here. And particularly with the issues that have been raised in the public hearing about what are perceived failures of specifications or the quality of the work. I wish that we could have had them more, you know, addressed in the report. If we had third parties looking at it and evaluating it, I think that would have given me much more comfort about accepting this notice of completion and going ahead and, you know, paying the contractor his re-- you know, paying the contractor his retention. I would certainly like to do that. But I am quite concerned about just moving forward with this notice of completion based on certain assumptions about what was or was not done accurately. I mean, for example, we talked about, I mean, the grooves in the street due to vehicles being on it. We did, there's a line item for traffic control that we specifically pay the contractor Isn't that meant to avoid those kinds of results? Or is it not specific enough to how long they're supposed to control the traffic? So, it seems like that there are particular pointed issues that are kind of surfacing, so to speak, and I'm not sure if we're actually getting down to evaluating them so that we can make a final decision about the notice of completion, or whether we need to go back and ask the contractor to revisit it. If there's a potential that there's going to be further failure, I certainly would hate to wait further periods of time and then try to assert any kind of warranty. Then, it seems to me that we should try to address those now while we still have the contract in place. I think that gives us a stronger position, if in fact something should come up, and try to come to agreement with, I mean, among what the residents have mentioned, and Steve, what you're representing, and some, I think, pointed analysis and statements and findings about these particular conditions. You know, this bag of material, is it the right composition and the right mix? Maybe it is, I don't know. It feels soft to me, but what do I know? And certainly, Steve, you know that much better. But, you know, the residents who live there, they also have some opinions about it, and I know seeing certain consequences. So, with that, I mean, I think it would be worthwhile just to, you know, kind of look at the particular issues, and particularly, you know, the materials, the grooving in the street, and maybe supplement this report so that we have this documented. I would feel more comfortable knowing that, and I think that that's maybe what the residents would be asking for. Let's just have a little bit more analysis at this point, just before we release the final retention. Those are my thoughts on it. Thank you, Mayor.
I would disagree, Sam, only in that we do have our resident expert, and that's our Public Works Director, and I'm leaning towards his recommendation. That's one reason. The second being the streets that were high performing by the same contractor under this contract, Cliffwood Heights. And thirdly, not having to go for a warranty, but we actually own a performance bond, which is significantly more clout than just asking the contractor to honor a warranty. So, at this point, I would like to move the staff recommendation to complete the payment on this contract, to also direct staff to pay special attention to a street that doesn't seem to be performing to the standards of the other streets that were done in this project, and if necessary, to call the bonding company into play if we need to get something repaired.
Yep, I think we've all.
That is my motion.
I'll second it. I think we've all learned quite a bit about this, and we just need to keep an eye on that street, and if it's deteriorating, we need to fix it, do something about it. Are there comments?
Just one final comment. I agree with what you said. You know, obviously, we've had success with every other street. You know, it comes down to, you know, was this the proper choice? We need to watch this street, you know, and we need to put it into our priority cycle. I know, and I think the Public Works Director will do that, but for now, I think, you know, I support that position. But definitely, you know, it's our street. We need to take care of it, and we need to watch it closely.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next item, resolution adopting the proposed city fee schedule for fiscal year 2013 and
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Each year, the city is required to conduct a public hearing regarding the city's fee schedule. This fee schedule primarily retains the same fees as the fiscal year 12, 13 schedule, with the exception of the following changes. Last year, council approved waiving the dollar additional state disability fee, which was going to be attached to business license. This additional dollar was to be collected at the time a business license was issued. The city has been supplementing this payment, which has been approximately, $280 would have gone to the state. The remaining 700 would have gone to the city to help offset some of the costs. And the remaining adjustments, corrections include the addition of a private tennis lessons fee, which was already implemented, it just was not listed on the schedule, and deletion of two fees that were more administrative in nature. They just should have been removed through other resolution actions.
And one point of clarification, the $1 state mandated fee was not added into the business license in this, that we continue to.
To waive it.
Yes.
A dollar.
Much to Tori Chagrin.
Why, I pay a city business license. It's the smallest check I write all year. What's the matter with a dollar?
We can add it in if council would so direct us. The state basically mandated us to add it in, you'll recall, and, you know, staff proposed adding it at that point, which would increase our business licenses by $1. At the point, that point, the council elected not to, so we are writing a check, basically, to the state to supplement that. Certainly, the fee schedule could be amended to add that back in.
I have a question regarding the general plan fee. I think that it's no secret that there's discomfort in the amount of money we spent on the general plan. Even though the staff did a stellar job in pushing it through, the million-odd dollars we spent on it is an uncomfortable dollar amount. The general plan fee now is to be collected for the next at least 10 years, and honestly, probably 20, before we do the next general plan. And I just don't think that it's necessary to collect, even though it's less than 1%. It's necessary to collect as much as 0.6% in overall value of the project, and it should be brought down more like three or four. What are your thoughts? Rich?
I'll bail Rich out a little bit here. I will point out that the general plan has cost the city less than a million. The total project budget, I think, is getting close to that. However, you'll recall the grant fund supplemented, I think, upwards of 25% of the overall cost. And the challenge that we face is that the city is under contract to complete the project, and if you reduce the fee in this fiscal year that we're in now, the intersecting lines between anticipated revenue from the general plan fee and the expenditures for the remainder of the contract won't quite intersect, and you'll end up with a small general fund supplement for the general plan update cost.
Is it possible with our actions tonight to keep the current 0.6% in place for the next 12 months and then have it automatically roll back to 0.3 at the end of that period?
We do have to adopt a fee schedule every year, but you could direct us to automatically include it in next year's fee schedule.
What he said? Okay.
It's a policy call, and, you know, if that's the council's desire, we'll make do.
Well, then I suppose my question is, after we do this 12 months at 0.6% and get through this general plan process, and keep in mind that we didn't institute this 0.6% till well into the 20 years that we needed to, and now we're well ahead of the curve, you know, if we stretch this out over the next 20 years, it seems like 0.3 makes sense. No? Personal opinion? No opinion?
Well, the money can be used for other long-range planning efforts, aside from the general plan, the housing elements, some other design guidelines that are implemented by the general plan, zoning ordinance updates, things like that. So, there are other planning efforts where that money does relieve the general fund pressures of doing that work. So, you know, whether we spend general fund dollars on it, or if we tax the developers that come in to help us pay for that, it's a policy call, but certainly, you know, we can make do.
I'm less worried about developers than I am about, you know, what's the average general plan fee for a single, a new single-family home in Capitola?
It's based on valuation, so it would vary depending on the valuation of that particular project.
So, $4,000, $5,000? It's significant in soft costs when going into building a home.
Yeah, 0.6% for a million-dollar house, you're talking about a $6,000 fee, I believe, if I'm doing that math correctly. So, it's not insignificant. Maybe, you know, if this is the direction tonight, maybe what we need to do is, you know, next year in the fee schedule, bring it back at 0.3 and include some analysis, maybe some other options, because there are, you know, the structure of it is not dictated by state law. There are some cities that have it as a flat, you know, flat rate, some have a commercial rate, it's charged as a percentage, where it's a flat rate for a single family. There are other options to be explored as we move forward, and we will be wrapping up the general plan this year, and so, at that point, you know, it's a real logical time to reevaluate.
And while it's true that, you know, if you're building a million-dollar home, really, $6,000, I wouldn't say a drop in the bucket, but relatively speaking, is not a lot of money, and yet, there's a principle in effect here, and at the time someone's building a home or remodeling, significantly remodeling a home, you start to get battered with all these soft costs, planning department fees and Arkansasite, and it gets depressing. I speak from experience.
I have a question about the animal fees. Yes? The.
Not you.
Yeah. Proposed City of Capitola fee schedule, September 12. I thought all of our work is contract work out, and wouldn't those fees be paid by the resident directly to the place where we contract?
I'm sorry, which fee are we discussing specifically?
It's the proposed City of Capitola fee schedule, animal services fee.
What page is that?
It's an attachment. It's an attachment.
It's at the end of the report. It's the last, the last set of fees.
Last set of fees. Which page number are we on? Is that the little page at the bottom?
69.
69, okay.
Dogs, cats, rabbits, rodents.
That's, you know, that is a very good question. We do, right now, the city contracts with, has contracted in the past with SPCA. We are currently operating agreements with ASA for how the adoption fees work. Frankly.
Can we leave these out and maybe bring them back to us? Or do we need, do we need them in there tonight?
I'm looking for someone from the police department to be waiting at me if I'm making a big mistake, but I don't know the implications of not having that, because obviously, we don't have.
We don't really do these things.
Well, we do, you know, we do collect animals that are picked up or taken somewhere else, and then I'll leave it to Tom, who will explain this better.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Some of the fees, like the impoundment, we do charge for the impoundment fee, and some of these fees on here are charged by the agencies that we contract with. So, and like the city manager stated, we're in negotiations right now with ASA changing over from SPCA.
So, are all of these useful and relevant, and we're really doing all these things? Or was this just a, just general list of everything that could possibly happen?
Originally, it was a general list, and we can look over which ones are going to be, which ones we're still going to be using, depending on where we go with the contract.
So, I think the upshot is that we do, you know, these are fees that are important. Some of them we'll assess directly, and some of them are effectively pass-through costs. But they are, you know, I haven't looked over, I have, this is the first time I've focused on the specific element of the fee schedule, and it's possible that some of them are potentially dated, but in general, it looks like this is something that we do need. And this is not a change. This has been, this is the same schedule that we've had in prior years.
Right, and the police department analyst didn't review this schedule prior to this meet, prior to this hearing.
Yes, she did. That's correct.
Okay. As long as it's, as long as it's up to date and relevant and so forth, and if and when, I guess it changes, I guess you'll bring it back to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Sounds like we're running a kennel here, doesn't it?
Birds and chickens and horses. Oh, my.
Would anyone else, would anyone like to speak on this item, the fee schedule? Any questions? I'll open the public hearing and close it then, and bring it back to the council. Anyone like to make a motion?
I have a comment first. I just want to respond to the general plan. I'm a little concerned about the funds and also the trend that we're in. Funds are generated by the amount of projects we do, and I'm afraid that there could be a declining amount of projects, and it's hard to gauge that. So, even though the dropping the percentage and in addition, dropping the amount of revenue that comes in could put us in a bind as far as how much we're collecting, since we do evaluate the schedule every year, I'd rather just take this year to do an analysis of how much we collected this year and compare it to previous years and establish if we have a trend that's going. And if the trend shows that we can reduce those fees, that's fine, but I think what community developer can explain to us is, is that it's not contingent upon using all the money for the general plan. There's other avenues that that, those funds could be directed into, and that may come up. So, I'm not really willing to go to Lorian at this time. I'd rather just watch it for a year, and since we do review it, other than that, I'm in support of staff recommendation.
Any other comments? Questions? Motion?
Yeah, I move that we adopt a fee schedule as recommended by staff.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item, D, we are continuing this item to our, probably our next council meeting if we have time. If not, we'll put it on the one following. So, this comes to the end of our meeting, and are there any last-minute announcements or comments?
I do want to thank the council for bringing up the Leadership Academy. It is something that we will be putting on this coming fall. It is an opportunity for folks who may be interested in becoming engaged in leadership positions in the City of Capitola through four short nights to get a little briefing about what it means to run a city and how they can become involved. So, I encourage folks who are interested to get in touch with Lisa. We are accepting applications for the academy as we speak.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Tour through the hot dog factory.
Then we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for being here tonight.
I'm going to call it a draw.
No, I got the over/under.